On the next slide, I want to kind of just talk a little bit about the learning model, the online learning model that we'll be using. Because we did have an overwhelming number of parents and families who select the online option, which is currently just over 18,000 students, we moved from an online academy to online instruction inside of each school. So that means each school is basically hosting their on-online students and face-to-face, being taught by teachers there at that school, and students are from class with peers from their school as well. We have just been very fortunate to have 25 days of planning time for our teachers, and they have been in training. We've been training them how to have a workbook classroom, how to do our new platform Canvas. So we've had lots of training during the month of August, and we know that we will want to continue that training throughout the year. We have also placed an instructional specialist in each school. That's something we weren't able to do in the past, and this instructional specialist really is there to help coach teachers and work with them for ELA content, math content, and technology integrated. We will be following their RCSS online learning plan. We created those in May. And what that is, is a customized learning plan for each of our special education students who have opted out of face-to-face and wish to participate in virtual learning. I can't begin to tell you what those plans look like, because they're based on his or her needs. We will be providing K-12 instruction through Canvas, that is our learning management system, and also using Microsoft Teams. So those are our two big platforms that parents and students will be using with our teachers. Next steps. Currently, our teachers are going back into their classrooms, getting ready for open house, and they will be communicating with parents prior to the first day of school. So every online parent can know that you're going to hear from your teacher. What can parents and students do? This is a great opportunity for you to go ahead and complete your Canvas orientation, and that's available to you today at rcboe.org/canvas. Some of you already know how to use it, so it's not required, but if you would like to do it, we would love you to do that so that you will be ready for that first day of school. On our next slide, we'll talk about how do you prepare, what kind of things should I have to have a successful online class? These are our recommended specifications for technology, you know, using Windows 10, 4GB of RAM, having an Intel Core i3 or the AMD Ryzen 3 equivalent or higher processor, and then also if you're able to have a touchscreen, that's just going to make it easier, especially for younger students, to navigate. A web camera-enabled device, it's difficult to participate in an online class if you don't have that camera. And then we also recommend an onboard keyboard, which, you know, for some of the little ones can be a challenge with an iPad. Those are recommendations, not requirements, but we have had a lot of parents just say, can you give us a recommendation on what we should use? We suggest that you follow the supply list provided by your teacher at Open House. Your teacher will let you know what you need, three ring binders, colored folders, whatever it is that your student would need for online. Consider purchasing a microphone headset, and that would be really important if you have multiple children. Why is that? Noise cancellation, just to allow them to be able to have their own private space, private conversation, especially if you also are a work-from-home parent. Again, not a requirement, just a suggestion of things that we thought might be helpful. Complete the student and parent Canvas orientation prior to the first day of school, and then practice logging into Canvas through Launchpad. If you just want to do a practice once you get into iCanvas, send your teacher a message that says, "Hello, I'm Melinda, really looking forward to be in your class this year." Not a requirement, but just a fun practice to kind of reach out to your teacher for your child to feel even more comfortable. All right, on our next slide, we have some tips that we created for a great day, a great first day of virtual learning. It takes just a few minutes. So this is really for parents. I'm talking to our parents here right now as you plan for your first day of school. Go back to school shopping for your supplies, just like you've always done. If that's been a tradition, don't break that. Attend open house, whether that's face-to-face or virtually, but still keep those routines. Also, like a special outfit for your first day. Now, we do want to remind parents, this is still school, so if you have to get up and get out of those PJs, right? All of our students do need to get dressed and be ready for learning. Take their first day at school photo. If you've always held a special board that says what grade you're going into for your family photo, take those photos, even if you're virtually learning. Pack a special lunch. Sometimes if your student is used to having a lunch, still do some of those routines, even if you are at home. Create a learning space for your child. What is a learning space? This is just a dedicated space in your home that lets your kid know playtime is over and you need to sit down and we're going to have instruction. That may be in his or her room, the dining room table, wherever is appropriate for you in your home. Create a schedule for your house for synchronous instruction and your asynchronous work. Remember that asynchronous work can be completed at any time, but you probably want to set an in-house rule so that you and your students sort of know when you're going to be working on your asynchronous assignments. Create a schedule for cardio activity during your lunch break. A lot of sitting. We have some recommendations that your teacher will be sharing with you, and activity today to get up and get that heart pumping, and still want to make sure we're healthy and exercising. Anticipate if you glitches with technology, especially on the first day. Be calm. There will be things, I can tell you now, there will be people who forgot a password, who don't know how to mute, who forget how to unmute. I bet all of us have been in one of those meetings recently where we all had to say, mute or unmute your mic. Some of that's going to happen, and we can expect some of those things on our first day. Arrange for a fun after-school activity. If that's something you would have done in the past, still do that even in a virtual environment. Connect with peers and be social, whether you choose to do that virtually or if you are in person while maintaining a safe physical distance. Ask your child to share something about his or her day at the dinner table. Again, if that's been a practice of your past, don't let that go. And be positive, because remember that your child is going to pick up on your cues. If you are nervous or anxious, they will pick up on that. And the last one is really about taking care of yourself, because you know, this is important in this environment. But practice self-care, like taking breaks yourself from the computer. Get plenty of sleep, exercise, eat well, stay socially connected. Those are just some guidance that we wanted to provide for our parents who are really thinking about what does the first day of school look like in a virtual environment? On our next slide, I'll show you, you've probably seen some of these before, but these are our schedules. So if you have an elementary student and they are participating in the AM synchronous instruction, that means that by 9:00, we need to be up and dressed, we've already had breakfast, logged into the computer, because from 9:00 to 11:00, they are going to be working synchronously with his or her teacher. That means they're going to be in real time, like using Teams, or they may be using the Canvas platform with conferencing. Their teacher is going to be providing a lot of integrated instruction. So there is a 10-minute break halfway through, but your teachers, depending on the age level, may ask them to get up and do some movement breaks even beyond that. From 11:00 to 11:50, they will be able to have one-on-one tutoring or small group tutoring with their teacher as needed, and that is every Monday through Thursday. Then we give them their lunch, cardio break, and then they would have the afternoon, we designated 1 to 3, but really that could be at any time, to complete your asynchronous assignments. You can expect that your students will have a reading and a math asynchronous assignment every day, kind of like homework, right? Those things that we are used to doing with our students outside of the school day. Every Friday will be asynchronous work for your students that could be completed anytime prior to Monday, and this gives us an opportunity to provide on-in-time PL for your teacher, that professional learning and training, and also gives them the afternoon to have conferences, especially with the elementary students with those parents. So if you have a student in the PM session, your day is going to look very same, but in reverse. So you also are going to get up, get dressed, get moving, and work on your asynchronous assignments. From 11:00 to 11:50, you will have tutoring with your teacher if you have arranged that, and they are available, you'll have lunch, and now you're ready to sit down for your synchronous instruction, using Microsoft Teams or our Canvas platform. So same, similar setup. What if you have a middle schooler? We'll talk about their day for just a second. The middle school AM session, each middle school student is taking their four core classes. That would be reading, math, science, and social studies, in some combination according to how you have it in your infinite campus schedule. So on Mondays and Wednesdays, from 9:00 to 9:50, they will take their first period course synchronously. Remember that this is the schedule for synchronous instruction. Second period, Monday and Wednesday, from 10:00 to 10:50, and Tuesdays and Thursdays, they'll be doing the same thing but with third and fourth period. From 11:00 to 11:50, they also have tutoring time, if they want to sign up with tutoring with their teacher, they have a lunch, and then they have the afternoon to work on their asynchronous reading and math assignments, or as a parent, you may say, I'd like for them to have a few lectures. We have some self-paced asynchronous edutainment assignments and courses where students can take an art class or a music class or some other enrichment opportunity for my child. Again, on Fridays, they offer them all asynchronous assignments, and they're having conferences as needed. So I'll stop for just a moment and kind of really make sure everybody understands synchronous and asynchronous. That synchronous instruction is what happens in real time, but we're using a virtual platform. So if you have logged into any Teams or Zoom or Skype or many of the other platforms out there, that's synchronous. We all log in at the same time. Some of our friends will join us with a camera, some will join without the camera because they don't have that technology, and some students, if they didn't have technology, could still call in. I bet you've been on a conference call, we have a little bit of all of those at the same time, but it's happening at the same time. That's synchronous. But the asynchronous work is built in our Canvas platform. It's very rich. It does not like what we experienced last year during distance learning when we had two days to prepare. I believe our families will be quite pleased with the amount of assignments, videos, pre-recorded videos, lessons, game-based instruction, that's all better for the students to work on in their own time. So if you are a middle school student in the PM session, you're going to do the same thing but in reverse. So you begin your day with your asynchronous work time, you have tutoring from 11:00 until 11:50, and we always say as needed. Two people can request that time. The student can request tutoring, and the teacher can request tutoring. So if they see that you need a little more one-on-one support, you can jump into one of those tutoring sessions, and that is synchronous, right? So I'll send you an invite, and we're going to get on Teams at the same time, we're going to talk. We have lunch, and then they begin their rotation of their fourth courses, with Friday being asynchronous work. All right, high school, it's a little bit different, so I want to pause and show you the schedule. So let's imagine for a moment that this is our sample bell schedule from high school A, and you see the first column is what our face-to-face students will be doing Monday through Friday. So just like probably when we were in school, you went first, second, third, fourth, fifth, had lunch, sixth, and seventh period, and that's a full day. So that is what we call our face-to-face schedule. Our friends who are at home learning virtually will work within that same schedule, but they have to have a synchronous schedule as well. Why do you have to have a synchronous schedule? If you didn't schedule your times for those synchronous lessons, there's the potential for double booking students. And we actually had that happen last spring, in March, where the PE teacher, the music teacher, and your homeroom teacher said, "Meet me Tuesday at 9:00," and the kids were like, "Which one do I pick?" So we just have a schedule to keep us organized so that we know when your whole group scheduled synchronous lesson will be. So if I'm virtually learning, my first period class will have an online, whole-group synchronous class meeting every Monday from 7:30 to 8:20. So what do I do in first period on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? I'm going to be working on my asynchronous assignments that are in Canvas, but I also still have access to my teacher for tutoring during that same time slot, or small group instruction. Perhaps the teacher delivered a lesson on Monday, half of the class really got it, a half didn't. He or she could schedule for their students to meet with them in a small group assignment on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday from 7:30 to 8:20, which is really their dedicated time and space. We know that the recommended screening time for students is no more than two hours of synchronous instruction every day, so we have a schedule that really supports that. So each Monday, I'm going to do first and second period, whole-group synchronous login. On Tuesday, I'm going to do third and fourth period, logging in. On Wednesdays, I'm going to log into fifth and sixth period, and on Thursday, that's my, I guess that's my great day, right? I have one synchronous class that day, seventh period. But again, our teachers are available to me for synchronous tutoring, whether that's through a phone call or through one of our Teams, our available platforms, but they will be working in their asynchronous assignments as well. All right, on the next slide, we'll talk about what do we do if we have an event where our face-to-face students also have to become virtual learners? What could prompt that? A number of things. There are a lot of hurricanes off the coast, right? We never know when we might have to switch from face-to-face to a virtual. Our goal is to maintain instruction and keep going, no matter what platform we're in. So if we have to switch, all of those face-to-face teachers will continue to teach their students virtually. So your second-period art teacher is now your second-period virtual art teacher, no change to your schedule. They will be providing their instruction through Canvas and Microsoft Teams, the same as our online learners. Those are our platforms that we've trained all of our teachers to use. Instruction will be released in two-week asynchronous units. Now, I'll stop for just a second and talk about why. The difference there is that we've asked our face-to-face teachers to go ahead and do two weeks' worth of planning, and they know, they've planned, they're trying to get lessons ready in the event that that's what we need to do, and they're going to publish, they're going to make that unit available, so that if there are students who do not have access to technology or Wi-Fi somewhere in that two-week window, they can go to McDonald's, they can go to a place where they can't access Wi-Fi, they can download that complete unit, take it home, work on it, and then somewhere in that two-week window, they have to come back to that Wi-Fi source and upload their assignments. Based on our federal card survey, that's about 10% of our students, so we knew we needed a plan for them. The other 90%, you don't need to download your asynchronous unit, it's just published for you so that you can begin working on it through your two-week window. You have technology, so you'll be working on that at home. Those asynchronous units are needy, they have a lot in there. We have recorded videos from your teachers, it is the same standards and the same content. The difference is it's available to be downloaded offline. So our student attendance is also recorded a little differently. Because students, if we were face-to-face and had to switch to virtually, they may not have access, so at some point in that two-week window, they have to log into Canvas and get some of those assignments, and be responsive to their teacher at least once or twice during that two-week window. Responsive could be a phone call, it could be an email, it could be turning in your assignments. So if you did not have access to Internet and you downloaded the unit, you completed it, you brought it back within the two weeks and uploaded, you would be counted present for that entire two-week window. If you have technology and you're working with your teacher every day, then again, you will be counted present. Face-to-face teachers will be available for synchronous support every day, and schools will establish and communicate those times. So I know there's a bit of a misconception, so I want to repeat that. Your face-to-face teachers will still be providing synchronous instruction, following the schedule as we discussed before. You really need a schedule so that they don't run into each other, and each school will create that schedule. We need to give our schools the ability to create that, because every school looks different, and one size will not fit all. We have some one-to-one schools. So if I'm a principal at Bel Air, and I know that all my 3 through 8 students, my 3rd through 8th grade students have technology, my schedule is probably going to look different than the school who knows that their students do not have the technology. They may rely more on phone conferences. So every school and each teacher will do what is best for their class, but those teachers are available for synchronous instruction every day. So next steps for our face-to-face if we have to go virtual. The teachers will still contact their students prior to the first day of school, or if we've already opened and we have to switch, they will have already made that contact. And our parents and students should still complete the Canvas orientation. I encourage you to do that no matter what environment we are in, because our students will all be using the Canvas platform, and so whether we are in a virtual mode or not, our face-to-face students will still have a Canvas account, and that's where their assignments will be housed. On our next slide, I wanted to show you a sample schedule. I can't stress that enough. These are just samples, because each school will create its own schedule. But if I were a face-to-face student and I were in pre-page Route 5, that's typically what we call a self-contained teacher. That means I go to Mrs. Cobb's class for all of my stuff, all of my content, and then I go to Specials for Art and Music and PE. So let's imagine that you were in Ms. Cobb's first-grade class. The principal would create a schedule where we have reading on designated days on the sample schedule, reading is designated as Monday, math is designated on Monday. Tuesday, we're going to work on science and social studies. On Wednesday, my music teacher is going to be online with me in my Teams meeting. Also on Wednesday, maybe my art teacher. On Thursday, my PE teacher. I would imagine most of our elementary schools will space out reading and math, so you get a little reading and math every day, but this is just an example so that the homeroom teacher, that self-contained elementary teacher, doesn't actually bump into your music, your PE, your art, your Spanish, whatever else is being offered. So this is again, the whole-group synchronous support time. Imagine you were in Ms. Cobb's first-grade class, and you needed help with reading on Tuesday. On Tuesday from 7:30 to 8:20, I'm going to join you, I'm going to have that small group, again, whether that's through the phone or through our Teams meeting, and I'm going to provide small-group support. This schedule is really there so that you can make sure you don't run into each other. What if you were in 6 through 12? They typically have a bell schedule. So this is just an example. If 6th grade was banned, that means that 6th grade from 12:40 to 1:30, my band teacher is going to meet me online on Wednesday, or whatever your school has scheduled. Again, please don't follow this schedule, so I try to write sample all across it. This is just an example, but you will need to follow the schedule posted at your school. All right, next slide. What support will we provide for our face-to-face virtual learners if we do have to go virtual since we cannot give them devices? As you know, we've been able to meet the need of all of our online students with the exception of about 43 students, and we continue to work with them, but our face-to-face students, you just don't have more devices to distribute. So for them, we have provided drive-up Wi-Fi access at each school, and that's typically located in your gym, parking lot area of your school. What that means is you can drive up to the school to access the Wi-Fi, download that content, or work in your car, if that's something that you are able to do. We received a grant to have Wi-Fi bus neighborhood schedules. Once those come in and we are able to publish that schedule, we'll make it known across our website so that you know when the Wi-Fi bus will be in your neighborhood, so that you can walk up or drive up to that Wi-Fi bus. It's got a short distance of 150 feet and then a possible long distance of up to a half-mile. So until they're here, I hate to give you the exact, I'll give you the range. Again, we provided two-week assignment schedules so that you could download that content, work offline, and come back. Our face-to-face teachers are also being very mindful to make sure that their assignments are what we call mobile-friendly, something that can be completed in the Canvas or Microsoft Team app. Why is that? We know that the majority of our students have cellphones, so if you have a cellphone, you can do all of the work that's being provided to you asynchronously. Also, every student in the Richmond County School System can download five free downloads of the Microsoft Office Suite. So if you've had to go out and purchase a laptop, please don't purchase the suite, we have that available for you. You can download it up to five times on different devices, and those directions are available on our information technology website. And we've also, on that same website, we have a link to affordable Internet access. We don't promote any particular vendor, but when we are aware of specials, discounted rating for students to receive Internet access at home such as Comcast, AT&amp;T, we make that available on our website. So on the next slide, I'll wrap up my portion and just kind of say, this is the online checklist. Pick up your device for your school if that was for your school. Review the schedule in Infinite Campus Parent Portal. Every parent in Richmond County should have access to that, and if you don't, just contact your school so you can see your child's schedule. Practice logging into Canvas through Launchpad, and I'm going to show you that in just a moment. Complete the parent and student Canvas orientation, I think I've said that a few times, so I hope that maybe we'll get that completed. Download the Canvas Student and Parent app to your phone. If your student is young and they're not using a phone, they probably don't need to download that app on their phone, but if you're a parent, this is a parent tip, from one parent to another, put that app on your phone. It's so easy for you to log in and see how your students are doing in the class, and you can communicate quickly with your child's teacher. Again, that's for face-to-face and for online. Prepare that quiet space for synchronous instruction in your home. Consider purchasing a headset microphone. Ensure that your device has a camera and microphone capability. Maybe you can practice calling your grandma and saying hello, but just let your student get comfortable. Schedule time for your students to complete asynchronous assignments. Just like pre-COVID, you had homework time, so make sure you have some asynchronous time. Attend your child's open house, August 31st through September 4th, and those dates will be available on your child's school's webpage. Each school is conducting their open house in small groups, so you need to find out when your group's day will be coming to the school for small, safe, socially-distanced face-to-face open house, as well as every school is providing a virtual open house opportunity. And as always, monitor your child's grades inside of Canvas every week. Log in, see how your child is doing. So right now, I'm going to show you how to get to the webpage, and drive from this computer. Jason, tell me when I'm ready. All right, so you go to your Internet browser, rcboe.org. I'm going to click on the Student tab, and I'm going to click on Launchpad. So now, let me log in. Your child knows his or her password, and if you do not know his or her password, that's where you really want to communicate with your teacher between now and the first day of school. So I'll log in. This is our single sign-on platform, so you should only have to log in once to access everything. Now, this is my dashboard, your child's dashboard, may look different, but we will all have this one here called RCBOE Canvas. So I'm going to click right here on the Canvas app, and it will take me. I'll respond to my touch. Expect technical glitches, right? And then this will take you straight into your Canvas account. Your child's Canvas page will probably look different from mine, you're going to have courses, they'll have course cards on their dashboard, so it'll say, you know, Mrs. Smith's first-grade class. It'll be all right here for you. I just, I didn't want to log in as a student, I don't want to show you a student's data, but this is what Canvas looks like for everyone. They all have the blue bar on the left with their menu, and that's where they actually can access their dashboard, their courses, their calendar, their inbox, which has an internal email for Canvas, and they have something called Studio, it allows them to record their assignments, send it back to their teacher, and then the Help button, that is available for students, teachers, parents, anyone with a question, you can always click the Help button and find out how to do something through Canvas. So that's what will be done on the first day of school. Go to Launchpad, log into Canvas, and we'll get started.
Matt Priest, Deputy Superintendent. Our primary responsibility for getting back to school and school reopening was actually preparing for our face-to-face model for the students who did opt-in to return to school face-to-face. I'd just like to highlight just a few things in preparing for face-to-face, especially for parents. Number one, I want to be asking parents to check their children's temperatures prior to leaving home, and if they're sick or not feeling well, we're asking them to actually keep them home. Also, talking to them about what social distancing looked like in a COVID-19 environment, especially in schools, and also practice in wearing masks. A lot of our kids, especially when they come to school, they're going to be required to wear masks in particular areas, especially common areas, and during transition, and so they're going to need that practice in wearing a mask throughout the school day. And also, one final thing, arrive with some patience. The face-to-face model is not that we're going to be utilizing in the COVID-19 environment, it's not the face-to-face model this time last year. And so when I ask the parents, make sure they talk to their students in reference to arriving to school with some patience. In area of transportation, just want to highlight just a couple of things for transportation. When we talk about the cleanliness of our buses, our bus drivers have been given the equipment and supplies in reference to make sure that the buses are clean in between routes and at the end of the route at each day. Drivers have been receiving training throughout the summer in reference to operating a bus in the COVID-19 environment, and we will be requiring all buses to utilize a sign city in order to enhance our social distancing requirements. For meals, just a couple of things for meals, we will be serving both breakfast and lunch throughout the school day. Breakfast will be more of a grab-and-go model. Students will not be required to tap in their Students will not be required to tap in their numbers, our assigned numbers, to receive the meals. And for our virtual students, we're asking parents to go to our websites, under Staff and Departments, go to Nutrition, and they can opt-in and out for our virtual meals. Our virtual meals will be given out or delivered on Fridays, will be prepackaged, there will be enough meals for the entire week until that next Friday, so they can receive another five meals. And it's available for our face-to-face and our virtual students. The big question that we've had all throughout the summer with face mask, we require gas on buses for drivers and for students, and gas in the building for staff, students, and visitors in areas where social distancing is not, it's hard to adhere to. In reference to cleaning and disinfecting and social distancing in classrooms, we provided a video for you to view, and a lot of the things that you're going to see on the video are some of the things that we've already talked to our staff about in reference to following social distancing guidelines. And so, but I also want to make sure that in preparation for our face-to-face and social distancing requirements, I want to thank GMA, CSR, and RISA for providing a lot of PPE supplies through our Georgia DOE Care Act. We've received things such as masks, cloth, we've also received some filter masks, we've also received clear masks for students who may be deaf and hard hearing. We also want to thank them for hand sanitizing soap, the hand sanitizing stations, blockers, disinfectants, and also thermometers. They are a partner of the Richmond County School District, want to thank them for all the supplies and assistance that they have provided to us this school year. Thank you. That's my part in reference to preparing for this monumental task of face-to-face model at the Richmond County School District. Thank you.
My name is La Monica Hillman, and I am Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services. I'm going to run through a few things on the slides, and then I do have some questions that have been asked that I am prepared to give some responses to. So we have really been working hard with, to remain a great communication and collaboration with our local Department of Public Health, and we are leaning really hard on all of the CDC feedback and resources and professional learning for staff, just to be sure that we are ready for our students, and we are ready. So just a few things that I'd like to share with you. Each school will have a point of contact along with the nurse. We know that our schools have hundreds of students in them, so we want to be sure that we have someone appointed and ready to engage our students as they become ill. This point of contact, if it's not, if it's an unlicensed personnel, then we will, we're planning to train them. And if the school nurse is not on campus, that person will be ready to jump in and receive students or staff that may become ill, and to follow our steps with care at the school and possibly with care and communication with the Department of Public Health. If staff or students report symptomatic of COVID-19 positive symptoms, then we, that person will also interact with the student or the staff. And if we're going to keep a log of students and staff that become ill with COVID-19, also if they just are showing symptoms of COVID-19. Every school already has a school clinic, and the nurse is normally there. The COVID point of contact will also have access to the school nurse's office, as well as an additional room that we're going to use for isolation as needed. We want to be sure, and we're working hard, to be prepared to keep students who have symptoms of COVID, and you can see a few of the symptoms, all the symptoms, and that list changes with the CDC and with the Department of Public Health, but pretty much those are the ones that we're looking for. But if students are having displaying symptoms, then we want to be prepared to have a place of isolation so that they're not coughing or sharing body fluids in any way with other students who might be in the nurse's office, or maybe the front office, or maybe in the classroom. So you can see there that we're also planning to provide the CDC home screening process to parents, so that parents can be sure to screen the students from home. We have a lot of students, and we're not able to do that at the school site, so we are asking that parents do those screenings at home. And be prepared to keep students home if they're sick. We want families and staff to feel comfortable staying home or keeping students at home if you're sick or if they're sick. Next slide. So we are ready. We know that we're going to have different scenarios that come up. Sometimes it's going to be students who are just displaying symptoms. Sometimes we're going to learn that students or staff are positive with COVID-19, living with someone who's positive for COVID-19. There are probably 20 different scenarios, so we are working very closely with our Department of Public Health. We've met with them, we're communicating with them, we plan to be communicating with them every day, as well as the schools communicating with the district office, so that we can stay on top of anyone who becomes sick. As always, if students are displaying some of those symptoms that you saw, parents should respond as we normally do. If a student presented with a fever, we all know from way back when we were in school, keep them home. If we have a fever, we shouldn't report to work. So we're asking parents to stay on top of all of the symptoms and to let us know if there are some situations where a student or a staff member presents as positive, or they've engaged and been around someone who's positive. We have various levels of communications that we're planning. We want everyone in the school to know, everyone pretty much knows their nurse, but we want them to also know who that COVID point of contact is. We want to provide the steps of the home screening process for the parents. We have that ready. We're going to communicate that there's no limit on sick notes. We usually, you know, have our attendance protocol, but right now, in the window season that we're in, we want parents to feel free to keep kids home if they're sick. We have some protocols and letters that we know that we're going to have to communicate with the Department of Public Health, with our families. At open house, we're planning to have some information provided for schools to share. And we also have planned physical, mental health, and SEL advisement as related to COVID-19. Some of the, and I think my slides have pretty much covered the questions that have come up, but one of them was, what about something as simple as hand-washing? Some of our students, they zip in and wash hands and they zip right out. So we have, using the Department of Public Health and the CDC resources, planned a first five days of school advisement sessions that have professional learning supports for the staff to go through and show digital resources as well as written resources for exactly what the best practices are for being in school during this COVID-19 era. Hand-washing, social distancing, the whole nine yards, and we're using the products from the CDC. Other questions? Mainly, the slides have covered them all. What triggers a class to close? If a student or staff member is diagnosed with COVID-19, we are planning targeted closures, which means we may close a classroom, or we may need to close a part of the building just temporarily, just long enough to be sure that we be clean. What, we would like to urge everyone again, if you're sick, please feel free to stay home. That's if you're a staff member, you're going to contact your administrator, and your administrator and you can contact HR so that we can be sure that that's documented. If it's a student, no questions asked from us. If they're sick, you're welcome to keep them home. Thank you.
Is there a question, Susan? Did you, I'll start there. Did you have any questions?
Sure. Well, maybe you covered the sunlight, but if school starts and there's, you know, an outbreak, how many cases are going, cars, they, you know, a big change, like a shift to online, online?
So we have already discussed that, and we are monitoring attendance every day for staff and students, and our target is about 10%. When schools get into that range, then we'll start making decisions about what to do next for that school.
Not there, not there, this one. This one.
I know we talked a little bit about communication via letters. What, can you go into a little more detail about when parents can expect to get letters home about possible exposure and how public you plan to make all of that information?
Thank you, that's a very good question. Parents will receive, as we get information about students or staff members that have become positive in our classrooms, we will look at two different letters that we're going to use, and these are the letters from the Department of Public Health, and one of them is a letter for students who have been in close contact, which means they've been less than six feet for more, 15 minutes or more. We're going to consider them a close contact, and students who are in that range will receive a close contact letter. Those students are asked to quarantine for 14 days. There is one additional letter that says that the student may have been in the vicinity but was not a close contact, and we're going to share those letters with those parents.
I have two questions, one for Dr. Copeland, one for Dr. Hillman. And if it applies to anyone else, I'm sorry, I'll start with Dr. Copeland. First one is, are you working with other community partners to assist with virtual learning, be it daycare, Boys and Girls Club, Turned Roots? Keeping in mind that there's money from the governor, I believe, that would be given to daycares for more than 20,000?
Okay, thank you. So are we working closely? To an extent. We are providing the resources and support that they have requested. Some of the local daycares have decided to allow students up through fifth grade to come there to their daycare and participate in online learning, and so they've asked us questions about what kind of computers they should have available and to share sample schedules. We've made that available. Family-wise, they wanted to make sure their staff was able to know a little something about Canvas, so we provided a training for their staff members on how to use Canvas. So we provided what they requested, but we anticipate that the majority of our online students are actually probably going to be at home, and so we really focused the resources around how to get parents that support. I hope that answered the question, but we are, you know, we're continuing to work. Any ideas or suggestions that folks have, we're always open to those on how we can really expand that reach to make sure that every student has those equitable opportunities.
Are you providing technology upon their request or are they using our organization?
Not the request of the organization. So for example, maybe I have an online student in fifth grade who applied July 2nd, and we gave that student a device, they're taking that device with them when they go. Some of the organizations wanted to have a few desk tops on hand so that they would have the ability there. Specifically, a church comes to mind, they want to make sure they have five desk tops for their students, and so we provided those specifications to them. But no, we did not give a device to the organization.
Thank you. And my question for Dr. Hillman, what other data are you using besides the COVID card, the CDC, as well as DPH? And in addition to what other data you're using, are you looking at other school districts and how they are responding to, you know, cases such as Columbia Park?
My answer to that would be yes. Something really great about us making a great decision to start a little bit later is that we are noticing what's happening with other districts in the community, in the vicinity, in the state at large. And I can't really say that we just watch one district or another district to determine what we're going to do, but we are looking at, you know, what's working in a district opposed to what seems to not really be working. Not focus on any one district, but yes, I would say that we are attentive to what's happening around us as we see students returning to school.
And just CDC and DPH in terms of for all of that, do you know?
And the Georgia Department of Education. There's a collaboration with the CDC, the DPH, and the DOE, and they have given us the path to recovery, and together, they're telling us all of the best practices and good steps to take for opening our schools, so we can really, really focus on those three because, you know, it's what's expected and it's what works.
I have two more questions. Will students be able to see their classmates on teams, classes?
Yes, assuming the student turns the camera on, right? So we've asked them to turn the camera on so that we can create that virtual experience. Our teachers have built in a lot of social-emotional learning, we want to just count the eyes on the students, help build that community of online, but yes, they will be able to see the students in person for class. They can't just go out and visit with anyone, but they'll be able to see their classmates.
And as far as attendance, you are going to be taking attendance, but right now, there's not really a set number of days that can be missed.
Well, correct. So we do two different kinds of attendance. Everyone who's doing online learning, they're expected to be at their synchronous whole-group session and log into Canvas every day. That's how their attendance is recorded. For our virtual, for our face-to-face students, they're just regular, take a roll, right? If they have to go virtual, they have a little more flexibility using the state headline to what we call a task completion in correspondence with the teacher. But there is not a minimal number of days that students are required to attend, and I think that perhaps is what we're getting at, so we want to make sure that any child who is still, please stay home and provide that parent with.
Dr. Copeland, another quick question before we start off that. I know you talked about, in the event that everybody, even a face-to-face learner, go to online learning, I know a lot of times you said, we don't have computers, can call in with their cell phones. A lot of elementary schoolers particularly don't have cell phones, even some middle schoolers. What would be the options for them?
Sure, and whenever I say call in, I really, you can pick up the rotary phone. You can pick up a landline and actually call in to a teen session or a Skype session and join. They just want to have that visual experience, but they can absolutely still join. And some of our students may not even have access to that, and that's why that synchronous support session is not required. But our teachers, we have an amazing group of teachers. So if that is the case, and they have that one student who absolutely cannot join, they're going to find a way to make contact during that two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
The last question, y'all want, the last question? I just wanted to ask a very proactive question because I know it will probably come, if there is a case, and you mentioned, Dr. Hillman, that letters, that the letters will be sent out, but you know how the public is. Those letters will hit social media, they will send them to the TV station, we'll call Ms. Ross and say, was there a case, what's going on? What can you say now to those parents before there's a frenzy? What can you say now to those parents before there's a frenzy of letters being published to social media, sent to news outlets, to ensure that you all have everything under control and you've contained the situation? So I would really like to reiterate that we are working with our local health professionals very closely. We've met, last week, we met with our local Department of Public Health. We are strictly following the feedback and guidance from our path to recovery documents from the DOE, which includes the CDC and the DPH. We have studied them, we have planned using those, and that best practices are embedded there, so we know that we're ready. My feedback to parents who might receive a letter, respond appropriately. If your child has been in direct or close contact with someone who has tested positive for COVID, before we think about running to social media, let's think about calling the COVID-19 hotline, or calling your health professional to get the health of the student taken care of. We hope that families won't do that. We know that social media is great, and it's great for the right things, but we would encourage folks to not share those kinds of things because really, it's just a communication between the school and the family, and that's where we would like for it to stay.
Thank you all for your comments today. Thank y'all for your time. And then what we'll do is just kind of wrap up, pack up, and we'll, we'll social distance ahead of us.